And we do have the first selectmen and myself and Judy here at Town Hall. So we're starting to get back a little bit of normalcy. So let's do this, call the meeting to order, please, and then Judy, if you would do a quick roll call, please.
Judy's unmute.
Hold on, I'll try to unmute her. Didn't work.
All right, I'm unmuted. Can you hear me out now?
Yep.
Okay. All right, Robert Spengler's here, Neil Bednick, Judy Schulte.
Here.
Is he? Yeah, okay. Amy Carroll.
Here.
George Blavell.
Here.
Todd Laviere. Chris Labrie.
Here.
Michael Chen. No. Maria Weingarten, no, and Bob Hamel.
Here.
Oh, Bob's here, okay. So we need to, well, we don't, let's see. No, we don't need to see anyone because it's Michael and Maria. Okay. And our first selectman's here, Evan Moynihan. All right, all present that are full members.
Okay. Okay. Motion to approve the minutes from the July meeting, please.
Come on.
Somebody, Tom Schulte, second.
All second.
Bob Spengler's second, all in favor, you can aye or raise your hands. Unanimous, okay, opposed, none?
Okay, so approved.
Okay, first item on our agenda tonight is an update from the Board of Ed. As you recall, last meeting, we had found a way to provide a non-laps account, $400,000 to help the Board of Ed and schools fund, to fund some expenses related to COVID preparation, sanitation stations, Plexiglas, that sort of thing, signage. So I've asked both Brian Lutzey as well as Katrina to come and give us an update on the expenditures with Joanne in terms of what the money was spent on thus far, and to get a status regarding the school openings, and what will things look like, what's the plan, how are things going, and anything we need to know at this point. So with that, I think I'll turn it over. Is it Katrina or Brian going to give the update?
I think Katrina will give us an intro and then we'll jump in.
Perfect.
She's here, we literally just got off of a webinar with several hundred folks talking about our reopen plans, so.
So it's fresh?
Oh, it's from one to the next. It's all right.
Is Katrina on?
I don't see her. She's not in the waiting room.
Um, you want to, or Brian, do you want to start? Or Joanne, maybe give us a quick accounting of the first wave of spending and a status as to how the summer's gone and how things look for September?
Sure, I'll get it started for a minute or two, and then either Katrina, if she's in, or Joanne, are welcome to get to the specifics. Just to share again, I literally just am off a call with the, I think it got up to about 230 or so folks. We have been, we've spent quite a bit of time, as I think all of you know, preparing, working with the Board of Ed. The Board of Ed put together a reopen committee, well, weeks back, back in May, and that committee has been meeting just about every week to sort of continue to work and update and plan. We put together a guide, we call it Charting Our Course. It's our COVID operations guide, and we really are focusing on not just sort of day one or day two, but creating a system that really, it's about pandemic-resistant schools, which is a Harvard term, I don't, I'm not coining that. But it's about sort of creating systems that help us to be pandemic-resistant throughout the school system, because we know that what we do now and what we do in the first couple of weeks will set us up to either succeed or not as the school year unfolds. So we've worked very, very closely with the local health department, with the first selectman's office on the EOC calls and everything else we've done from the start. I've also had the good fortune of being, of representing superintendents across the state and a group with the Connecticut Department of Public Health and epidemiologists and others in order to create some of the guidance that's been coming out through the state's plan. They've got addendums to their plan that have come through that really talk about what are the scenarios if there is a known positive case in the schools? What do we do next and what do we do next? Working through those things. Also, we worked to put together the plans that you see around identifying levels of spread in the community. Most of that comes directly from the Harvard Global Health Project, but we look at things like number of positive cases per 100,000 people in a county as a seven-day average. And that's a primary metric that we use. And fortunately, on that and the other metrics, we've done very well as a state, as I'm sure you know. We continue to do well. So thanks to that, we're confident moving forward in the plan that we have to sort of integrate folks in. We, in doing our planning, we have to know and remember that our students and staff haven't been in the building since March 11, you know, and been together. So it really does take a little bit of time. So we're looking at 12 days in the beginning to do, have a 50% capacity, where our students, our teachers work together, get used to being back in our schools, understanding what they have to do in order to be safe in them. And we can't, again, lose sight of the context that we're in. And then we look to phase back in our students at 100%, starting K4, and then the next week, 5-8, and then the next week, the high school. So that by the first week of October, everybody's back in. The planning, and we'll get to the specifics, but as you can imagine, the planning's been immense. The financial needs have been significant, and we'll get into that. Just simply, certainly, all of the physical needs that we have in order to prepare our schools. But on top of all of that, as I'm sure you're probably aware, there, our real estate market has, I think, done pretty well these last few months, which means that it's reflected in our enrollment in our schools. You know, folks are coming to town and enrolling in the schools, and we've seen that, that wave. Now, that's, I would say it's probably COVID-related, but it's, puts another stress on our school system. At the same time, you know, we do have some teachers that are retiring that weren't planning to retire. So we're looking to make some, you know, obviously hire some new staff there, and there may be some turnover savings here and there from that. So we look at that. But even the, like, our plan for returning into school, we're going from three professional learning days to five days. We're bringing in staff upfront in order to give them the training they need, you know, faculty and staff, so there's other costs. The cleaning protocols are increased, things like that. So again, we'll get into the specifics around that. But I just want to lead off by saying that the team has been working incredibly hard and doing an amazing job. And, you know, we are ready, and we will definitely be ready for our staff to return on the 24th and for our kids to begin returning on August 31st. And with that, if you want a quick rundown, and if helpful, I can share what Joanne's about to present on the screen.
Yeah. I want you to provide a little bit of context for that, be great.
Sure.
Sorry, can I just interrupt? I think Katrina's in the waiting room.
I made it in.
Oh, you did? Okay, great.
I missed the beginning, I apologize. I have a little technology difficulty.
Would you like to say anything before we go to Joanne and the numbers, Katrina, or it's up to you?
Yeah, I had planned to, I had a couple remarks I'd like to share, if that's okay. Maybe go out of order a little bit. But I just wanted to thank everyone for, you know, the opportunity to provide an update on these plans and on our COVID expenses. And we really appreciate, you know, on behalf of the Board of Education, the creation and funding of the non-lapsing account in June. The funding of $400,000 from the unspent $2 million in the budget enabled us to go to scale and secure, you know, a number of critical safety materials and supplies that are making it possible to open our schools later this month. So following the creation of this count, you know, the state, we got our 100-plus document of our guidelines for reopening schools. And Dr. Lutzey and Dr. Ceding will share more details on that shortly. But, you know, in response to the significant unbudgeted expenses, you know, in response to COVID, the BOE is requesting that you do consider a full transfer of the remaining 1.4 million, approximately $1.4 million to the non-lapsing account this month to cover expenses, you know, beyond the initial $400,000. And Brian and Joanne will share more details on that. But, you know, one of them being increasing enrollment as a result of COVID-related movements and more. So, you know, against a backdrop of back-to-back years of below-budget town spending, declining debt, mill rate, all the things you know, we have a very robust general fund that exists specifically for unforeseen emergencies. And I really cannot imagine a better use for that fund than now for our 4,200 and growing base of students who have been out of school since March. And they face an educational experience none of us have ever known. And if we don't use our town's emergency fund for a pandemic, what else would we possibly use it for? So without these funds, the Board of Education will have to look to our current operating budget and contemplate some difficult decisions amidst a global pandemic and with students who have different needs and challenges than when our budget was developed last fall. The BOE cannot open schools with a budget that has already been overspent. The demands on our superintendent and our administrators, as Brian was just saying, have never been greater. They have been working incredibly hard since March to maintain the excellence in our schools that our community deserves and expects. So moving ahead without a clearly defined process and expectations for funding will require significant additional hours of planning, preparation, and meetings with unknown outcomes. So we do ask that you strongly consider the non-lapsing account as the most logical and transparent way to track, communicate, and share our COVID-related expenses. So as you know, our school district continues to be recognized for its leadership and ability to make a seamless transition to remote learning last March, and the positive response is paying dividends in our real estate market. But we need to respond to these increasing demands on our system. So we hope for your continued support to allow our already lean resources to be focused on getting our kids back to school and doing as much for them as possible within a realm of financial responsibility. So we hope that you'll make a full commitment to our youngest and most vulnerable citizens and allow our planning to move forward with confidence to develop the right plan and the right solutions for all of our students in these unprecedented times. So I just wanted to add those comments on behalf of the Board of Ed, and I'll turn it back over to Brian now, thank you.
All right, Brian, if it's okay, I'd like to move forward.
Yes, please do. And Joanne, would you like me to share the spreadsheet?
Sure, but just before we go there, I wanted to just dial back to last fiscal year. As you know, we went out on March 12 to long-distance learning. And in order to set up to do that, we had to expend some funds out of our operating budget last year. So in total, we spent on COVID-related expenditures about $115,000 to get technology in place, to put different one-to-one devices for students who did not have those resources, and to be able to activate a system that would actually enable us to provide that type of opportunity for our students for last school year. In addition to that, we are looking into the future and saying, what kind of resources do we need to procure now in this fiscal year to ensure that we have them for the start of school next year, assuming that we were going to start the school year? And so we spent another close to $100,000 stocking up on PPE, which is mainly shields, masks, gloves, and that sort of thing. And then in addition to that, we really did a lot of research on equipment that would help expedite the application of disinfectant once we got back into the schools, knowing that we have a very limited amount of staff that is really tool to clean schools the traditional way and not just clean and disinfect. And we did a lot of research, and we procured some equipment to do that to the tune of about $30,000. So a lot, you know, there's a portion of our expenditures that did come out of last year's budget. When we met with the boards, we had anticipated turning back to the town $2 million less the $400, knowing that we had made those expenditures, and we are pretty much right on target with that number right now. Probably a little bit north of $2 million, but we're currently closing out the books. So within the next couple of days, we'll have our final numbers for the Board of Education and the town officials. So moving into this year, we had the $400,000, which, quite frankly, has been, to me, from a procedural point of view, extremely helpful. We've really appreciated that, so thank you so much, because we haven't gone into spending money on COVID-related needs with the worry that we're going to have to slash a program in March, April, May that kids just need, you know, and have in place. So it was really important to get the fund in place, and so thank you so much. So we have been going through the process over the last several months of purchasing the needs for the district. And Brian, if you could put up the list, we've recapped them into, I think, six or seven categories, but we can talk about them because they're pretty basic. So one of the things we wanted to do is leverage all of the desks, chairs, and student equipment that we had in the district in order to comply with the guidelines of six feet or three in certain configurations. We would have had to either purchase a significant amount of student furniture or work with the furniture that we had, which was really important to us, because we have really good furniture in the district, but we had to figure out a way to really work with it. And one of the ways that we did that was providing barriers within the round desks and the cafeteria tables. So within the round desk, which is really all of our K1, 2 setups in the district, which is hundreds of children that sit in these seats, we have what we call flower tables and tables that normally sit six children, and we wanted to figure out a way to max out at four. So we did that by constructing plastic barriers, mostly appropriate-rated Plexiglas, as most people know them, with the desks, with the tables that could accommodate them. And so we were successful at doing that. We procured the Plexiglas material back in June with the $400,000 once we knew we had the appropriation. And our staff, actually, the maintenance staff constructed the barriers. So they fabricated all the barriers using our woodshop at the high school, which was really cool. And they were able to provide all of those structures. If we had to go out to market to purchase them, it would have been more than three to four times what we actually did them in-house. So kudos to our maintenance staff for doing that. In addition, we wanted to provide our staff and small group instruction with portable stations that are not Plexiglas, but they are appropriately-rated plastic barriers. And we went through a company in Danbury to procure those. So about half of the 132 is for the Plexiglas, and the other half is related to procuring mobile Plexiglas or plastic barriers. And those will accommodate over 1,000, the mobile device units will accommodate over 1,000 of our teachers and our students.
So Joanne, just, if I can just add to that for a quick moment. So the thinking there, of course, is that, you know, each teacher will have one, or every staff member that works with kids will have one, and then they can sit one-on-one and have a conversation with the child with this right between them. So it actually has a little handle that they can carry it around. And, again, it's because we know that people need to have one-on-one conversations, you know, and be able to talk those things through. That's what education's all about, and where students are learning through getting feedback on papers, what have you. So that's, I think, it was a very creative solution, I think, when it came up, because it allows for that personal interaction to occur. And so I guess I just briefly want to say, we've all seen pictures of what's going on in different places, parts of the world, where all the kids are sitting down at their desks facing forward and watching the teacher teach all day, and just sitting there alone in almost sometimes, you know, in their own little encapsulated space. We've really taken the next step to say, learning is collaborative as well, it's exploratory, and figured out ways to get kids to be able to work together in groups and for teachers to be able to work with kids one-on-one. So I just wanted to share that, because I'm very proud of a lot of the solutions we've developed, and this is one of them.
Great. So with regards to PPE, a majority of our PPE was procured last year. And even though it was last year, we're just actually, it's just hitting our docks right this week. So we procured masks for both our young students, our middle students, our high school students, our adults in the buildings. We procured shields, age-appropriate shields for all students, all staff. And the thinking there is that, you know, face-to-face conversations without a mask are important to our students because they learn by looking at people. And the masks, we tried out, I don't know how many, many, many different masks, we brought in samples, and I think we came up with a good solution that was relatively affordable. In addition to that, we're going to provide all of our adults with gloves. And there's certain areas of the high school program, and some in the middle, where students will be provided with gloves, where they use and share devices, mainly keyboards. So all of those items have been procured and are ready to be dispersed to the schools. Technology has been a big thing for us. I mean, this is all about technology when you look at hybrids and distant learning. You know, we're very fortunate in this district to have had this $600,000 lease every year where we refresh our equipment, and we have, you know, I think, appropriate equipment for in-school instruction. But when you look at this model, you really need a one-on-one for all of our students. So Jill Corenti and I worked with both Matt Salvastrellini, our digital learning director, and Ian McHugh, who does, who's the manager of IT. And we basically collected all of our inventory district-wide. And we said, okay, based on this inventory, what is appropriate to do a one-on-one K through 12? And we were able to disperse and redistribute most of our, well, all the technology we had in hand with minimal purchases. And in fact, more than 50% of the purchases that we did do were up for refresh on the lease this year. And so we were able to get more than 50% through that lease. The balance is the 175. Its devices, webcams are new for us, so that was a $30,000 purchase out of this amount. Carrying cases, every student will have a carrying case. They'll also have a charging device and earphones. And then there's others, a few other peripheral equipment for charging. So 175 is there. I would say on the technology piece, we have two other areas we're looking to find solutions for. One is within the classroom where some students are at home, some students are in the classroom, and we need to have quality audio. And the teachers need to know who the kids are at home, they need to see them and interact with them. So we were looking at monitors and soundboards. Brian's the tech expert, not so much, but I know what we're looking to purchase, and we're actually testing out devices this week for a solution there. The other piece would be expansion of Wi-Fi to the exterior areas of the building. You know, it's safest for students to be outside in terms of the virus. We're, so we're looking to have covered areas for the students to go outside and be able to have the same experience. And the Wi-Fi is important, because when we do have the hybrid where students are both in school and half the students are learning remotely from home, we need to be able to communicate with them. And without that access to Wi-Fi, the students couldn't go outside and have that experience. So even though it's a solution for perhaps the warmer months and perhaps some chilly months, not the colder, colder months, it is a good solution for the five or six months out of the 10-month school year that we do have.
And Joanne, if I can just add to the technology very briefly, I mean, you set me up by calling me an expert, so I have to say something. The, on the Wi-Fi, we're also looking at making it more robust internally, because we're recognizing, of course, so all the devices are Wi-Fi now, right? They're not, very few are plugged in. And the base stations that we have, generally, they were one for every two or maybe three classrooms, and that can create a bottleneck in spots. So we're, we've identified where those bottlenecks could exist, and we're looking at also, you know, making that more robust. Because even if after the onboarding plan, when we get to 100% capacity, we're still going to have students that are home in remote learning, or at least we have to plan for that. We also, also on the webinar I was just on, some parents asked, what if, if we go to 100% in, can we stay in a hybrid if it's working for me and my family so that my child comes to school two or two and a half days a week instead of all five? And the answer to that, again, is yes, because we're looking to do something in the public schools that hasn't been done before, creating this kind of a flexible system so that families, parents, kids can opt to participate remotely but still be members of the classroom. So there's the external part. Part of that also is making it a little bit more robust internally and looking at solutions that allow teachers to teach. They're going to be simultaneously teaching a live group and a home group. So figuring out how can we do it where teachers can see everybody clearly, they can interact with them and make that as meaningful as possible across the board. So it is a real challenge. It's a, it's said, it's kind of a fun challenge, fun problem to solve for. And I'm, again, confident that we found the right solution, but it does, it takes, you know, time and thought and strategy.
So Joanne, I, the $400,000, just want to make sure I'm clear. We had approved the 400, you're saying you spent six. Was there anything else on the six? I want to make sure I'm clear on what you're asking for. You have details of the, what Katrina's put a number out there that is obviously a surprising number. So what, where's the plan for that? What's the request, actually, with the details? Do you not have them yet?
So, you know, moving forward beyond what we have before you right now, there is some key areas. One is the solution for the in-classroom audio display for students that we just talked about. We're going to get a clearer number on that, we're honing in on that. We have had, over the weekend, several different solutions overnighted to us. And tomorrow, they're actually putting them into play in the classroom to see what works and what is the best solution that we can find. So we will have more clarity on that number. We had originally started with all of the Wi-Fi upgrades at as much as a half a million dollars. We hone that down and hone that down from area to area. And the latest response that we got from the vendor that we've worked with for years is 110. So we just got that this afternoon, we have not vetted it out. We'll be honest, we've been in meetings with our administrative team and the school principals all day today. But it looks like if one, if it works, 110 would be that number. The final really big piece that we're looking at is staffing. And that's really kind of complex, because, so for example, we know that we do have to hire a minimum of two cleaners for Saks in the high school. And the reason for that is that in the middle of the day, we have to have both the night, day shift and the night shift overlapping to accomplish the cleaning that must be done in bathrooms, on all of the touch surfaces for rails, but more significantly in the cafeterias. So we have to take shifts that traditionally have been, a shift starts and it ends at 2:30, and then the night shift comes in at 2:30 and works till 10. That no longer can be the model. So at the elementary levels, we're looking to accomplish, leverage overtime, an hour of overtime for each individual to meet those needs. And we feel, based on the plan that Dan and I have worked out, that we can accomplish that. But until it's in motion, we won't know.
Right, okay.
At the high school, the numbers are just not there, we don't have enough people. So we do have to hire. So that right alone, for two cleaners, 10 months, we have 10 months left to the year, would be 100,000 plus benefits. In addition to that, we have had to hire at least four new certified staff to support the increases in enrollment.
What is the number? What's the number of enrollment? What's the actual number of increase in total?
Sure, I actually, I have that as of the beginning of, just before the storm. The storm kind of threw us off because there were appointments made from families that had to be canceled and rescheduled, so we're expecting these numbers to go up a little bit more. But we're, we are at this point 12 over our projections in kindergarten. So that's running at 270, it was projected at 258. Overall, on the elementary level, we're at 1504. The Saks is...
What is 1504, is that up, down? What's the number?
You know what, let me, you mind if I just share this with you now, instead? Because I have it on my screen, it might make it easier if I can share the visual.
Sure.
Let's see, I'll stop that share, I will start this one. There we go. Is that, I did the wrong one, my apologies. Is that clear, or should I make it bigger for folks?
That's fine. So it's an increase of, my reading is 45?
So, yeah, so district-wide is 45, but as you know, it's also where it gets concentrated that matters. So we are, that kid, those kindergarten numbers, being 12 up there, has caused us to make some changes. Saks, we've had to bring in four new staff members at Saks, two in the seventh grade and two in the fifth grade, just in the last three weeks to accommodate that. And again, we're still within our, you know, we're striving to be within our class-size guidelines. We haven't done anything beyond that.
Okay.
You know, despite the COVID. We have a few areas that are above guidelines right now, even across in the elementary. So we're trying to look to see, letting that shake out a little bit more, and then we'll have to make some decisions. We also, as you know, the staffing challenges because of the pandemic are immense, and the way that, the language around F and L A+ and other things, and being prepared for folks who, for whatever reason, need to be out of school for a period of time. So we've looked at some long-term substitute hires that So we've looked at some long-term substitute hires at each of the buildings and some other ways that we can try to be prepared or to be prepared. So that if, if some of the staff have unforeseen things come up in their lives, that we can pretty smoothly keep things happening in our classrooms.
Excuse me, Brian?
So can I ask the, my board any specific questions that they may have? Looks like Amy has a question. But let's go around and get some questions answered, then we'll come back to the discussion.
So Brian, you're about two, three, two, three weeks out from starting. Do you have any sense of, you know, do you think most people are queuing up for enrollment already? Or could you have a whole bunch more people come in? Do you have any idea on that?
Well, I, there's two, I heard the question two ways. So one is, you know, that we were talking about choice, right? Folks can choose to be home for remote learning or come into the program. So last I looked, there were about 1,900 responses to the survey so far. And about 95% of the people are planning to come in to the school. So that's one piece around the remote learning versus live. And I think that speaks to the confidence people have in the planning and the work that we've been doing. Second is, you know, I, the numbers would be a little different if not for the storm and all of the rescheduling we've had to do. I don't know what the distribution of those kids are going to be. Generally, you know, we are enrolling right up and even past the first day of school. And then if that happens, of course, that's where some of, sometimes our class sizes have to go over the guidelines because it gets too late. But our elementary principals and middle school principals have been interviewing all summer. So they've really created a bench of really strong, excellent candidates. And if, if we do need to bring more on board, we're ready to do so.
Thank you.
One question that always comes up is the net savings. You mentioned quite a few retirements, so I'm sure that's part of the equation.
It is, you know, it's, it's, it's a, it's a quick target. It's not something I'm willing, I'm ready to share. I just don't have the specifics, but certainly will.
That's okay. Understand. It's August. Other questions from the, from the board?
I have one, Todd.
Yeah, go ahead, Neil.
Just, you know, the number is so big, and I understand the justification of it, but what about, and I know how hard it is to plan. But did you consider a little bit more of pay-as-you-go, you know, where you review things? You know that some of the choices you're going to make, things are a little clearer. It just seems like you're coming in with such a big, big number so early.
Sure. I'll, I'll speak to it briefly. Anyone is welcome to jump in. But the, you know, part of it, just for context at least, at a recent Southern Fairfield County superintendent's meeting, we did a quick, quick whip around as far as costs go. And the surrounding districts talked, reported out at least, is spending anywhere between 1.5 million and 7.5 million towards COVID efforts. So some, some pretty high numbers. I think as Joanne mentioned, we've done a, I think, an admirable job, admirable job, sort of controlling expenses and doing creative things like, again, not spending five or 600,000 for Plexiglas, but spending much, much less, getting the blank sheets in and then fabricating it ourselves, right? So we've been looking for ways to do that. The, one of the challenges with pay-as-you-go, as you, as you mentioned, again, anyone's welcome to jump in, is that it really requires us then to operate in the red, you know, as we're sort of doing that and the process that it takes to do so. The, I certainly want to be clear, we're so incredibly grateful that we created this account, we've been able to use it. The success we've had in preparing is directly connected to our ability to access those resources and go to scale quickly, just like we talked about. You know, that has really worked for us. We think that, that reporting on the non-lapsing account is very important. So sort of having it separate and using it specifically for this reason, being able to report that out. And also knowing that there, there's opportunity hopefully for reimbursement to some degree. I don't know exactly what degree and how long that'll take. We, I know that FEMA can take a long time for reimbursement, according to some first selectmen on a governor's call that shared some information about the macro bursts that hit upstate. But the, you know, what we're looking to do is be able to identify a solution, you know, and continue doing that and then taking those things to scale and being able to sort of nimbly respond, knowing the resources are there and not getting into a place where we have to really pit one against another as we, as we make these decisions. And I think, again, there could be more to it, but that's a quick-
I think Chris Labrie had a question. Chris?
Yeah, I would like to, for Brian to explain a little bit what it is, the total ask.
Sure. So I'm going to stop the share if that's all right? Sure. So in conversation with the board, administration and others, again, knowing that the, the gratitude we feel for the, the account being there. The ask is really to have access to the money that's being turned back in order to use that money specifically for needs as they arise due to COVID-related expenses. The, the state does put bounds around the amount of money you can put into a non-lapsing account. It's 2% of your operating. So our operating is, you know, a little north of 90 million. So there are limits around that. But the ask is for, you know, for the rest, the funding that is being turned back because it wasn't, wasn't needed, wasn't spent last year, to fully fund that for us so that we have that, that same level of access to be able to be nimble in our decision-making and continue to problem-solve along the way. We certainly know, recognize and appreciate that we're all in this together. And all of the boards, all the community and everything, everybody is, is doing the right thing by our kids and our school system. And that's very, it's obvious and it's, you know, it's appreciated. But the, you know, adding in, I really go for appropriations in order to implement solutions adds another layer of complexity that we were looking to, to not have to.
So as a follow-up then, do you have a budget or tentative budget of how this million eight would be spent?
Well, it's a million, it, it would only be, the 400 has been already shared, right? We gave them 400 before, so it's, it just, let's be clear, there, the, this is a theoretical opportunity. It's not like they automatically have 1.8 million dollars. That's up to this board to determine. We determined that we would provide 400 just to allow our school district to get a jumpstart, if you recall. What they're asking for is what is the theoretical balance of 1.4? The questions, the detailed question's an excellent one, though. I, I think where, where the board's going to struggle here is we need details. Is Wi-Fi 495 or 505? Is the janitor, why, why hire the janitors? Why not use temporary labor? And one of the questions would be, why hire them at all? Are the schools even going to be open November 1st? We don't even know if they're going to be open November 1st. Why would you hire someone? It seems like there's a lot of unknowns. I, I think we all are behind this district around supporting the needs. But without specificity, it's, I, I don't even have it on an agenda item to approve 1.4 million.
Sure, sure.
Vote on something like that tonight.
Todd, if I could-
If I could just finish, I would be happy, I think we'd be happy to have a, a detailed plan come together for our September meeting. A few, as, as Joanne just said, a few cards will be played out here over the next week or two. And if it's 1 million, it's a million. If it's 800,000, it's 800,000. We can put that together, pass an appropriation and send it on to the town council for their approval. But it's important that you understand, just from a process point of view, it's, it's not like we can vote on 1.4 million right now. It's without a, without a lot of detail.
So I don't, I don't know if the, if the Board of Finance is meeting again prior to the closing of the books. But if, if you were to be, I was, my recommendation, my suggestion might be to approach this similar to the way we approach budget. If you had a list of questions that we could receive in advance, we'd be glad to, you know, prepare answers to those. Because, you know, a couple of even things you just said around why not temporary workers or, you know, hiring cleaners and things, those are, you know, answers that we, we've explored those, right? We can give you those answers, but getting those in advance, we could be sure to sort of spell that out and, and be complete in that. So that, you know, we could, you can make as informed a decision as possible. And I certainly, you know, I think we all recognize and appreciate the need to do that.
Well, as there was mentioned in the last meeting, and I don't remember who mentioned it, but that, you know, you have a budget. There's, there is a big, a big, a big budget. I appreciate it's allocated and there are things that you can, can do. And I, I, there's, there's, there's a, there are other alternatives to trying to push through 1.4 million dollars without details by the end of the month. So, well, let me get feedback from the rest of the board members. I mean, I, I would just suggest, let's just put together an appropriation, come to us, we'll have the details. We'll, we'll, we'll pass it in September and on we go. In terms of special meeting, I have to think about the logistics of sending the announcement notification and everything like that. So I can't answer that right now, but I could answer it tomorrow.
And, and Todd, if I may? Yep. So it, it would be very helpful and we can write out the question. But I think you should separate out the costs related to the increase of enrollment and the incremental operating costs related to getting schools ready and during a pandemic. At some level, I view those as two separate things because you have staffing differential every year. You manage through it in a pretty, you know, actually an excellent way every year to the extent that, that, that there needed to be an additional transfer of general fund balance to, to fund for additional teachers. We should absolutely do that, but that should run its course through, through all the town bodies and should be directed separately. And I also think, I might be wrong, but I also think you can go ahead and, and, you know, you got to hire the teachers you need to hire. What you're really talking about is compensation and can you pay compensation in May and June of, of next year? And so, you know, we should do it in September, but we, you know, we, I don't think that's as critical a deadline. I could be wrong, as it, as, as the other expenditures which are real, you need to make sure you have the money. So I, I'd be up, in my recommendation would be to separate those two. If we even needed to have a special meeting in order to figure out how to go, you know, four or $500,000 now for real expenditures that are needed to get the schools ready, we should do that. We have a meeting next week or when, or 10 days from now. So that I think is fine, but I think that the, the additional staff related to, to the increase of kids, which is terrific, I, I think that's a separate item.
George, if I could just ask a clarifying question on that, just to be sure I'm, I'm hearing Bob right. We, we're talking, you're differentiating between, say, custodial needs due to the cleaning requirements or because of COVID and the classroom teachers that are required. That's, I heard you differentiated, just want to be clear.
That's how I would look at it, right? Yeah, because custodians are because of the pandemic. But you're going to have to, you've already, you know, you're going to commit yourself to hiring new teachers because of the increased enrollment.
Right. And my expectation is once they begin in the new kid in public schools, they're never going to want to leave. So we're going to need those teachers.
Yeah.
Well, but we also, we have to, you have to hire them, but I think you said there's savings associated with retirement. So again, maybe letting 30 days or 40 days just go by cleans up some of the, you know, some of those certain-
Go ahead, George. That's a good point.
Yeah. I, I, I do think we have to be careful and not turn this into Board of Ed budget review light. I think, I think Brian and the Board of Ed have done a pretty impressive job under some very, very difficult circumstances and a pretty tight timeline. But I do think that what we really do need to see, and I don't think it needs to be, you know, a 95-page budget presentation, but I do think we need to say, okay, this is how we got to the 1.4 million dollar ask. And recognizing that these are expenditures that are going to cross multiple, multiple fiscal quarters. And probably some of them are going to change, but to at least give the board a sense of why that's the right number and where it's going to be expended. I think that's at a minimum a responsibility the Board of Finance has to ask for. And, and I would like also, I'm, I'm still a little bit confused, even though Chris asked the question. The 637, does, is that in addition to the 400,000? Is the 400,000 reduced to 637 to you just need another 237 for those expenditures? I don't really understand how those numbers all fit together.
Dr. Keating, would you like? I mean, I'm glad to, but go ahead.
Yeah. So those are the total expenditures related to the non-lapsing account. So it's, we've spent in excess of that by 2, 232.
Okay.
So other input from the board, I, I could, I'd like to propose this, that we take this consideration, I think, get the details from finance on the specifics around the request. And you may need a week or so to get that done. We will, I will try to work to get a special meeting, probably a Zoom call, set up before the 30th and see what we can do to get a quorum together to have a review of that, of that discussion. And then, and then, and process the, the request at that point, okay? We, you okay with that as an approach, everybody? Neil, do you have a question? Or Tom?
Yes, I have a quick question. Just as Brian, do you think you'll be coming back? Is this sort of a, the new sort of process? You must, you probably have a level-two list that's pretty formidable. I'd like to get an idea of what's coming after this in the immediate couple of months.
Sure. The, you know, it's, it's a very hard question to ask, Neil, because there, or to answer, because there are so many variables in play. I do believe that the work we're doing now, if the metrics remain consistent and what we're talking about now will be the right number and appropriate and sufficient for us to, to get into operating mode. The, you know, the, the physical barriers, the things that we're, now, we'll need masks and we'll need some more sanitizer. We'll need some of those things and, and we can figure that out. But the larger expenses, I believe, for, for the most part, would be, would be done, would be taken care of. That's not to say there aren't unknowns out there that, you know, we're focused on the, the short term and maybe there's something that pops up. But I think that really, once, once we get up and going and we're in that 100% model and we've refined the mitigation strategies and, you know, our kids are attending, our teachers are attending, and we hit our stride that way, I think the work we've done now will, will keep us there.
Okay, good.
One thing I suggest, what we probably ought to plan on is a, is a regular update on our agenda for the fall. I, I still think we just don't know what we don't know. And things are fluid. And something might come up in October that we didn't plan on. Let's just stay close in communication. And we'll do our job to provide funding and you pull the, the thinking together and we'll keep working together on that. Sorry, Tom, Tom or Amy, do you have a question? I don't, Tom, if you were raising your hand or not? No, okay, Amy, you're on mute.
Okay. It's, which put together is very, it's really impressive what you guys have done. And it's, it's very inspiring to think that the metrics stay in place, that the kids are going to be back at school. That's really very exciting. It's, it's, you know, let's, let's, let's hope they're, the levels stay the way they are. The one thing is you are putting together, you know, kind of a bit, a bit more detail. And then of course, as I think it's George said, we're not looking for every penny, right? But to the extent as you move forward, that if you know there's just some stuff you had hoped to do as part of the regular program, but with COVID in the world, you're not going to be able to do it, that there may be some offsetting savings. Because if you could just reflect that in it as well.
That's a good thought. Good thought. That was Judy's point. Okay.
Absolutely.
Okay, yeah, go ahead, Judy. I think Judy has a question then.
Yeah. Brian, just a question. What is the total amount that is subject to COVID reimbursement by the state?
Well, I think there are-
The 400 that we've already proved, what else?
Go ahead, Joanne.
I could take that. So the CARES Act has a slice into it for education called ERS, which is basically tied to Title I funding. And we receive 95,000 per year for Title I. And that's pretty close to the number that we will be entitled to. It's an entitlement grant. 10 of which goes to non-public, we receive 85. So our application is in for that right now. In addition, the other day, the, the governor came out with a grant similar to that for 160 million for the districts in Connecticut. Now, we're going to put our application in for that as well. And we will apply for everything that we can that has not been applied for under FEMA. Bill Ossman under FEMA has been taking care of FEMA for the town and for the board, and we've been working closely with him. So whatever that number is would be added to the 85 that should be coming, just based on the entitlement.
My other, my other question, why can't we hire part-time custodial help? Why would we want to hire people at that rate with contractual obligations for a limited period of time?
Well, I, the unfortunate, well, the answer is partially in the question. It's contract-driven. We, under contract, we cannot bring in outside cleaners to do this work. And we're looking at the, the needs that we have truly are, are significant. The, just simply part of it, for instance, is cleaning the bathrooms, where we do them once a night as we do it now and what have you. Now we're doing it two or three times a day across the board. We've got, I don't know, we counted up 360 toilets in the district that need to be cleaned. I mean, again, it becomes a real, a true challenge around the staffing. So we're looking at, where can, can we expand the hours a bit to save some money? But contractually, we're limited in what our, our solutions can be around part-time or contractual help.
Okay, let's do this. Let's, let's, we got to move on. This is a great update, great progress this summer. I think everyone's really pleased with all that you guys have been able to do to get ready. We'll get a special meeting set up before the end of the month. You guys do your work on getting the details and we'll meet again and see- You guys do your work on getting the details, and we'll meet again and see if we can finalize. And like I said, I think we just have to keep this as a regular agenda item on the Board of Finance for the rest of the year. Just to see it.
Yep, makes sense.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you all.
Thank you, everyone, we really appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay, um, let's move on to, let's see, Bob and Lisa, this is, I just want to make sure everyone's clear of the context. This is an informational meeting only, we're not voting on anything, we're not approving anything. We wanted to get an update on the progress that the library has made and to get some clarity around the one operating cost question that we had asked, and we will get that update tonight, and then in September, I'm going to invite them back for additional details around planning, building costs and so forth, as we continue to understand this progress and project a little bit better. So without Lisa, I'll turn it over to you.
Hi, good evening, everyone, and thank you for inviting us back. Both Bob and Paul are on this call as well with me to help answer any further questions. What we discussed was an update on the project, and in our brief conversations recently, it's been, it it has seemed that maybe the most useful thing would be for me to explain the entire process of this project, so that everyone is working from the same set of understandings about when we will know, what we will know and when we will know it, so that we can be providing you with the most information at the time you would like it. So I'll start with just a bit of a, a recap of how we got here, or the path to today, and then what happens over the next year in this building process. So as you all know, in 2017, which was about five or six years after the work originally started with the architects, we got concept drawings that were agreed as the, the best plan that we had had, and we went about creating materials to undertake a quiet or leadership phase of a capital campaign. That also served to test the concept, as we showed it to over 1,000 individuals across town during 2018 and 19, soliciting philanthropic investment. As you all know, we, we came to you at your invitation in January and shared the plans publicly. Between January and June, we spent time talking to various people in town government, meeting and sharing information, answering questions, and moving forward with helping all of you to understand the project. So what we had at that time was what is called a concept design or a conceptual design. And in June of 2020, we engaged Centerbrook Architects to start moving the project forward again. So the conceptual design set out the parameters of the project programmatically, structurally, We then had that need to actively pursue fundraising, and the concept drawings were turned into a marketing presentation to to test the market and to get that fund, get the philanthropic contributions from the community. The overarching design intention was well outlined. These concept drawings and video were what we presented in January and formed the basis of our preliminary projected post-occupancy cash flow, the entire project cash flow, I'm We then hired Centerbrook to turn that conceptual design into a full set of schematic design drawings. The design team, consisting of structural and civil engineers, code consultants, landscape architects, et cetera, began to make edits and necessary adjustments to the conceptual design to coordinate the work amongst themselves, as well as to begin the ongoing process of value engineering. Architects and consultants recently issued this set of documents for a, so that's now the schematic design called SD, and we've now got that, and it's been submitted out for estimates from both our independent estimator and our newly engaged pre-construction manager. So they're out now, and we're expecting them back in the weeks ahead, and we're going to then get these two independent, pardon, two independent and separate comparative cost analysis. These will be much more detailed than the conceptual cost estimates, and will further break down all the costs. These estimates will then be reconciled, and we'll need to make any adjustments to make sure that we're staying in budget. Once we get to that level, the design team are then asked to move on to the next step, which is to complete the detailed design, design development set. This is due to be complete in October, and again, we'll go through the same process with estimates and value engineering as required. In a parallel process, we will be working on our application to planning and zoning to be ready for a submission in September. And then in November, the team will start work on the construction documents, which should be complete by the end of February. So I'm hopeful that perhaps that sort of outline of the process is helpful to everyone for understanding sort of what we know today and what we'll know looking forward. We responded to your request after last month with what we believed was the most complete set of information that we had to answer those questions, and I understand that you have some other questions, and we're, of course, wanting to give you all the answers to all of your questions, so long as we have that information.
Yeah, I would just do this, I'll ask the board if they have any questions on what you just went through, on the process, in terms of timing of some of these things. I really don't want, I want to limit the questions a little bit, let's not get into the details until the, until they're ready for the, first of November, February. Anybody have any questions on what Lisa just outlined?
Yeah, Todd, I might.
Tom, go ahead.
Yeah, so Lisa, can you tell me, is the goal of getting all of these schematics and other construction documents together, is the goal you're aiming for a guaranteed maximum price contract?
So I'm, I'm going to defer to either Paul or or Bob. I don't think that we've actually decided, we're, we're going to go with the, a method that gets us the best price and the lowest ultimate price. So whether that's guaranteed maximum price, I mean, Paul, can you apply?
Yes, we would, we would do, we would pursue a guaranteed maximum price with whoever the construction manager is, who is not selected at this point, but that would be something that we would want to pursue moving forward. GMP, Guaranteed Maximum Price is the best and most effective way, that also gives us certain flexibility from a contract perspective as well, so yes.
Right. Thank you.
Hey, Tom, just one extra thing to add in there is, two weeks ago, we hired Turner Construction as the pre-con manager. So we will get in roughly several weeks from now, hopefully, new estimates on the construction costs, and I know there's been a lot of concern or discussion about, you know, the detail the Board of Finance wants on these things. So we shall, we will have the most accurate numbers we can possibly give you probably by the, the end of April, excuse me, the end of August, sorry.
End of August, okay. And George, did you have a question?
I have one observation and one question. That's a pretty aggressive timeline that, that you laid out, Lisa. To say you'll be in front of P and Z next month and be ready to move forward with building plans two months thereafter, that's, I think that might be a little optimistic.
So, so these are not my timelines, these, these come from all the construction and architect people, but just to be clear, we won't be construction-ready two months after that. We will be applying to P and Z in September, probably in October. We won't be construction-ready till May.
Right, and we wouldn't be heard until October, November, and there would be presumably, hopefully, only one hearing, but most likely more than one.
Yeah, I think, I think you should definitely plan on more than one.
We, we expect that, I'm, I'm just being.
Hopeful, yeah. And the second question is, is not to be, I don't want it to be construed as I'm, I'm playing any kind of gotcha games here, but do you have a max budget for this?
We have a max budget for this.
Yeah, do you have a top amount of, by which you will not spend more than?
Well, I don't think we. Let me answer that, you know, the board has approved the current estimates of 36.5 million dollars. Now, that can slide one way or the other, you know, could go up a little bit based on the new estimates we receive at the end of the month, could potentially go down. There's contingencies involved in that, two and a half million dollars or more, but in the end, it's going to be our decision at the time that we get these new estimates. If we think it's too high, to value engineer the library back down to a budget which we feel is acceptable for our fundraising capability. So, you know, right now, we sit with 16 million dollars of committed fundraising, assuming we get 10 million from the town, that means we've got to raise another 10 to 11 million dollars. We want to stick to that as best we can. There's no desire for us to let this project explode higher, and we'll just have to deal with it accordingly, and we already have. We've already value engineered several million dollars out of the cost of this project, most recently by shrinking the square footage and doing some minor tweaking with the design.
And does the design include the parking study?
The, the parking study is ongoing, we're looking at various options to see what's the most maximally efficient and cost-effective and best all around for the library and the town. So we're in the midst of that right now.
So George, the prudent thing to do on the parking study is to provide multiple options, right? So, you know, we've gone out to our donors and proposed underground parking in a parking garage, which we're still very carefully evaluating. But at the same time, we understand that the, the inevitable decision will be made by P and Z with respect to parking. So we have to have an option B and an option C in case that doesn't work. So we are preparing simultaneously all three options, we're exploring them in detail, and we have consultants working on parking studies as it relates to traffic flow and everything, and we hope to have this all wrapped up within the end of the month or early September.
Thanks, George, other questions? Anybody else? So the other part of the agenda item, Lisa, was any details on the operating expenses expected, maybe just premature for that answer, given where you are in the process, or you may have at least an idea as to what you're, you're thinking about.
So, so I think you've all seen the five-year projection spreadsheets that I created back in March, and then updated for you all a couple of weeks ago. The updates included information that I now have about energy consumption and the energy modeling that's been done by our engineers. It is now very clear that not only are we likely to be not exceeding the energy costs we have today, but actually going down. And so I think what you all have seen in that spreadsheet is that we are going to have some costs going up, cleaning, landscaping, we're going to have some costs going down, and we're going to have some new income. And so on balance, we are looking at, and I think this is the part that interests you most, but we're looking at a town contribution that is in line at the 2.5% per year that we've had for the last four years. So I'm, I'm, I'm very happy to take very explicit questions, but it's a very detailed set of sheets, so if people would rather ask me specifics, that would be fine.
Hey, Todd, if I could just interject for one second, because there's really two key takeaways for the, for the Board of Finance as it relates to operating expenses, and one is that, you know, if you look at our expenses going forward, a bulk of it is in staffing and and compensation, right? And that is not going to change with the new library, you know, there are no new hires that are going to be due to the fact that we have a new library. The second thing is the building expenses, and as Lisa mentioned, you know, our, there's certain expenses will go up, obviously, with, with cleaning, landscaping, et cetera, but we'll have offsetting costs on fuel, we'll have decreased maintenance, we spent a fortune on this old building today to maintain it, those are going to go way down, and we're going to have more revenue opportunities, and this is the key. For the brand-new building with conference rooms and rooftop terraces and fundraising opportunities, we view overall that we can actually improve the budget going forward. You know, there's really no reason that we need to hire anymore, so we're going to operate the library as we have every year in the past five years, and that is, we will work with the town year by year, and if we negotiate a 2, 2.5, 3% increase, that's it. We're not going to come to you for more money just because we have a new building, and we want to make that explicitly clear.
No, thanks for the details that you sent, and I think if we have questions when we see, when we see you in September, we can go through any more questions around that. But no, thanks for that, Bob, I appreciate that. Other input, anyone, or other questions at this point on the process?
Chris LaBria is his hand up.
Oh, Chris, I'm sorry, Chris, I didn't see you, still don't see you.
So I just want to ask around the additional income, revenue opportunities. So from your line, it looks like there's a new, a line in there in projected years that is labeled new revenue, so that's what you think on a net basis you would be able to, to raise from your activities, right?
The two lines, 16 and 17, which refer to revenue, yes, one is facilities hire, the other is leased income.
Okay, so we're reading that proper, correctly. And that would, that would be, and then that would go into operating, your operating budget is not going to be transferred to the capital accounts, correct?
Well, as I've shown, there are, there are some increases in operating, there's going to be an increased need for cleaning, an increased amount for the, the landscaping, and so, and so, yes, that will be going to offset those increases.
Okay, I understand, thank you.
Okay, thanks, thanks, Chris. Okay, if there's nothing else, thank you, thank you, Bob, thank you, Paul, and thank you, Lisa, we appreciate this quick update, and then we'll continue to have more detailed conversations throughout the rest of the year, I think, every, probably every month, one way or the other, as we get into this a little bit. So if there's nothing else, we'll, we'll move on to the next agenda item. Thank you, Lisa.
Okay, good night, everyone.
Thank you, guys, thanks, Paul.
Good night, thanks.
Yep. Okay, okay, thanks, everybody. All right, Linda, where's Linda? Over you, Linda, you've got a financial update for us, you want to give us a quick status as to where we are?
Sure, I'm going to give a quick status, and I'll do a quick screen share here. And you can see that?
Yes.
Okay.
That's a little too small.
Right, let me make that a little bit bigger.
Do we have this on our tablets, Linda?
Yes, you have this on your tablets. You have this on your tablets, and then you also have it, I also sent a document with this information. If you have the big document that I emailed, it's on page 53. If you're looking on your tablets, it's attachment 5A.
We have it at 7A, I think.
7A, okay, 7A, sorry.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Sure. So briefly, I'll just start with where we are in terms of tax collections for this year. And this was something that we put together, so we're trending fairly well, if you compare, I just, we started tracking this the first, the second, the third, and the fourth week, just to kind of see where we are, and tax collections, as you can see, we're pretty much where we would anticipate being in any other year. Of the 7,200 or so taxing units that we had, as I mentioned before, we only had about 50 or so that submitted for the tax, for the tax deferral, and everybody seems to be remitting their taxes just as, as they would in any other, in any other year. So year-to-date, we typically, this is where we build the first half of the revenues, we've collected about 52% of the annual tax revenues, it's slightly less than the prior year. This time last year, we were at 54% of total revenue. This time last year, we were at 54% of total revenues, but again, it's trending where we would anticipate that to be. What we also did here is just to break it down by the source, and I thought this was a little bit interesting. Of that revenue, we still have a substantial amount of revenue that walked in, people basically walking into town hall or the drop box outside this year, dropping off their checks, and that is actually almost equal, actually a little bit more than what we collect in escrow. So we have a considerable amount of our taxpayers that just walk in with a check. Our lockbox is that, the funds that are sent to the PO box, and those are trending pretty much where we would have been. We have seen an uptick in online donation, and obviously, that is a direct correlation to the health pandemic that's going on. And so we've had actually a spike of almost in excess of $2.5 million being paid online versus being either mailed in or walked in, and therefore, but the total revenues is where we are, we're at 74 million, 73.3 million year-to-date compared to 74. And so as far as revenues, I think we're trending well. As I mentioned before, our burn rate is about 13, 13.5 million per month, so from a cash flow perspective, we are trending where we would anticipate being this time. And then just looking at the year-end, I'll spend just briefly looking at this, this is part of the conversation that we just had with the Board of Ed. Just looking at total, I'll start with expenditures, which is on page 55, revenues, sorry, on page 55. Year-to-date, we've collected 148.8 million, which is a little bit over what the budget was, 147. Again, this is similar to what we trend historically, we collect more than what we budgeted, and it has more than made up for the under collections, as I've said before, in building permits and parking revenues. And therefore, if you compare that to our total expenditures, we have spent, year-to-date, 147 million, we're projecting to get to about 148 million by year-end, which is again below what we had budgeted for the year. In terms of the impact on the fund balance, at this point, the current projections, we're looking at potentially adding about $800,000 to the fund balance, but this obviously does not take into account the conversation we just had with the Board of Education and the additional request for funding that you received from them. It does, however, take into account the 400 that you have already funded, and it takes into account this 1.6 million underspend from the Board of Ed. And that's really all I have as far as the financial update. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Does anyone have any questions? Okay. Want to stop sharing, Linda, maybe you'll help us see all the screen.
Real quick, just in terms of the, so when we're trying to nail down the underspend number from the Board of Ed, is it 1.6? 1.6? Because I think they were talking about 1.8. Because I think you...
Well, that's a projection. They have more current numbers. So I'd go with the number that Dr. Keating mentioned earlier.
Okay, and then, recognizing that, I think they reflected they spent, I think, a quarter of a million dollars in last year's budget COVID-related, too, right?
Yes. But along those lines, I think as part of that discussion, as you consider what decisions you make when you have your special meeting, it's also important to point out that there is an amount that we're spending for COVID-related that is getting reimbursed.
Right.
And therefore, not all of that is fund balance funds that you're spending upfront. So we're fronting the money to be spent, but we're also getting reimbursed. So far, we just submitted last week, for the town side, we've submitted a total of 601,000 for reimbursement related to COVID. 25,000 is a special grant that came to the Department of Health where they had an allocation of 30. We've submitted 25, and we have an additional submission that we've made, we'll be making this week for the full 30. On the town side, and this is just as of June 30th, on the town side, we've submitted 377,000 for reimbursement through FEMA, and the Board of Ed so far has submitted 169. So those combined are about 572, and then FEMA also allocates a 5% administrative cost for that. So if you add all of those together, we have about 600,000 that we submitted to FEMA. If all of those are eligible expenses, we will get 75% of that reimbursed through FEMA. The balance that is not reimbursed by FEMA, we will turn into the state as part of the CARES Act, and if all those eligible expenses get submitted, reimbursed, we are looking at some of that, a big chunk of those expenses already getting reimbursed. So as I shared with you, Todd, as part of the discussion with the Board of Ed and the non-lapsing, that 400,000 that you've already allocated has been spent, but some of that is going to be reimbursed. So even in the allocation that you make for the Board of Ed, we could essentially be repurposing the reimbursement funds and then...
We can give it right back to them. Yeah, no, exactly.
Exactly. Exactly.
Good, okay. Okay, any other questions for Linda? Okay, thanks, thank you very much, Linda. Great update. Okay, I think, Kevin, we got an update for you. It's been an interesting week.
Kevin, you're on mute.
You're on mute.
Sorry about that. I'm back, and I'll start again. You want to shut? So anyway, I was saying that it's been a busy eight days with Esa Eus. We are fortunately down to 40 residents without power at this time, and EverSource continues to work on that, hopefully, they will all be done by tomorrow. I'd like to acknowledge and thank Fire Chief Jack Hennessy and for leading the EOC, and all the staff, town staff, and volunteers that worked busily for literally 12, 14 hours a day, especially the CERT volunteers who manned those phones. They did a great job and helped our residents get through this miserable experience for many. Obviously, our view is that EverSource also did a miserable job with handling this storm, both in terms of planning, their timely response, and their communications, and we and others are going to complain to the, the Pura is holding a hearing in Hartford, and we may participate in that, testifying on EverSource's abysmal performance, which we experienced and most other towns experienced. We had a very successful RFP for the solar. The two very competitive bids came in for the town projects at 3.9 cents a kilowatt-hour, and the schools for 3.4 cents a kilowatt-hour. So the schools will proceed with their Saks West and high school projects, and the town will proceed with a couple more buildings, and Waving Care Center will also plan on doing two of their buildings, and pricing that we were able to get with the global package. The CHP project at the wastewater treatment plant, the combined heat and power, is moving to contract installation in the fall, so that the CHP project for Saks is a bit hung up on a bit of a disagreement we have to resolve with the Board of Education, as to, they think now they need three boilers rather than one, and we'll probably come back to the Board of Finance with that in September. I've been working with the library on the parking issue, as Lisa mentioned before, we have to try to get that resolved the next couple of weeks before we come back to the Board of Finance and the Town Council in September. And on COVID, it's been very good news. Since July 28th, we've had no new positive cases in Canaan, and that means, you know, people in Canaan and residents who are in Nantucket, and anybody who tests anywhere around the world, they get reported back to the Connecticut Department of Health. And most importantly, the Department of Health finally started giving us access to their negative reports as well. And since July 27th, we've only had one out of 450 tests that were positive. So that's terrific news, bodes well for the start of school, and that's all I have for COVID.
Okay. All right, thank you. And last on the agenda, Linda, do we have some light items we need to approve? Oh, I'm sorry, Chris, you're on mute. I apologize, I didn't see your hand. Yep, go ahead.
So Kevin, can you tell us where we stand on this parking study for the library? Because it made it, the library folks when they were on, made it sound like this is part of their ongoing engineering work, and you are talking about something that sounds different from that with the goal of determining where the parking will actually be. So can you fill us in on that?
Well, the focus, Chris, as you know, is right now on the underground parking and a solution to make sure that the traffic studies indicated there would be a problem coming out into Main Street, so we're looking at a solution that can go to the P&amp;Z in October that will be approved by the P&amp;Z rather than having them look at something that will fail with their review. So hopefully, they can still do underground parking, and we will look to Plan B only if that fails.
Okay, so the goal, or the direction that you're pursuing for the time being, is the underground parking?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any? Any other questions? Okay, over to you. Linda, do we have any...
Yes, just a couple. I do have two transfers that need your approval. The first one, and they all total on page 67 of what I sent you. These are the year-end transfers that we make just to balance out the accounts, and therefore, some of those are moving funds from contingencies for DPW salaries and so forth. And therefore, I would ask that you approve the FY '20 transfers separately, and those are, I can share my screen if you'd like me to.
Yeah, sure, I think you should.
Sure, okay. Okay, there we go. So on page 67 is where they total. So in the general fund, we are basically reallocating $1.2 million from a series of accounts to other accounts within the general fund, and this is just to balance out so that we don't have any lines that are in the negative. This is typically what we do at every year-end, and therefore, I would ask that you approve this for the general fund. We have about $5,000 that's being reallocated amongst funds in the pool fund, and then we have about $15,000 that's being reallocated within the sewer fund. And again, these do not change the total budget allocation, it's just the money's already been spent, we're just allocating the funds into the appropriate budget.
Okay.
So that at the end of the year, when we audit, everything is cleared.
Yeah, okay, so I need a motion to approve the 2020 transfers within the general fund?
I'll move.
Bob, second? Judy, second? Okay, all in favor? Say aye or raise your hands. Opposed? None? Okay, so moved.
Great. And then I have another set of transfers, these are in fiscal year '21, and these are two. The first one is, again, for the parking study, not the library parking study, but the town parking study. This was something that was appropriated in the fiscal year FY '20. They were scheduled to start the job around March, I believe, but then with COVID, they did not, obviously, we couldn't get that work done. They've regrouped, and they're ready to do that work now. However, the work is going to be done in fiscal year '21, the funds were appropriated in fiscal year '20. So in order for the department, because they're budget-out-of-line views, and so these funds weren't budgeted for fiscal year '21. So the funds are going to roll unspent in fiscal year '20, but we need to reappropriate them in fiscal year '21, and we're proposing to move that from $25,000 from contingency, that does require your approval. And then we also have another one in capital projects, where we had a series of projects that had paint as part of the projects. The Department of Public Works went out and bid all the paint job together, they got a better deal that way, but as a result, the amounts of paint within the budget were slightly off, and here's a, this sheet shows you, we actually came in better. We had 103 budgeted for paint work, the bids actually came in at 92,000 for paint, but they're just in different accounts, and so this is just making sure that all the accounts have the right amount of dollars for paint work. But again, it doesn't change any of the budget allocations, it's just where they're coming from. And for capital, for project transfers, again, these come to you for approval, and that's why they're on your list for approval.
Okay, so we need a motion to approve, can we do this in one motion, to approve the $25,000 from contingency as well as to true-up for the accounting regards to the painting projects?
Correct, we could do that.
Motion, yeah, okay, second? George, second, all in favor? You have aye, opposed? None? Okay, so moved.
Perfect. And then on page 72, these are just transfers for your review, they don't require approval, we're just reallocating funds within the sewer budget from contractors to equipment rental, and then in ambulance corps from electricity to information services, but these are just for review, they don't require approval.
Okay. Thank you, any else, Linda?
Nope, that's all I have.
Okay, thanks. And thanks, everyone, for coming together here for a rare August Board of Finance meeting. Oh, for a select...
Could I amend my remarks? Because I failed to mention, I noticed Tiger is still on here, that in addition to the EOC work, the Highway Department and Tiger's staff and Mec Mozakre did a fantastic job cleaning the town, and also working the last 48 hours with EverSource in a way that had we not done what we did, we would not have made the progress we did. So Tiger and Moes, I want to thank you personally and all your team.
Thank you very much.
I agree, yeah, big shout-out, thank you. Thumbs up, no question. Okay. If there's nothing else, a motion to adjourn? So moved, second? Tom Schulte? Okay. All in favor, none opposed? Thank you again, everybody, appreciate it. Have a great rest of your month with power, and we'll talk in the end of the month.
Can you try to do a special meeting?
I'll take care of it, yep.
Great, thank you all, see ya.
Good night.